Here.
Trustee Taffet. Chair Raja, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. In order to assist the Assistant Board Secretary in taking the accurate minutes of this meeting, I request the trustees identify themselves for record when they're making and seconding motion or abstention. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June nineteen twenty twenty four Board of Trustees regular meeting and July thirtieth twenty twenty four meeting of the Board of Executive Committee?
Motion, trustee Anderson.
I have second, please.
Second trustee Delgado.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstention? The motion is carried. Ms. Gores, do we have any correspondence?
Chair Raja, there is no correspondence.
Thank you, Karen. Before we move to the presentation for today's meeting, I want to introduce this year's graduate student representing the Board of Trustees Bhavisha Chitala. Ms. Chitala, would you like to have a few words? Hold it down. There you go.
Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. Um, I'm Bhavisha Chitala. I'm currently a finance major at Rutgers Business School. I was elected as this year's student representative for the Board of Trustees. I am so excited to be a part of the important work, and I hope by contributing to the table by bringing my students' perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chitala, and good luck. Dr. McCormick, do we have a presentation today?
Good morning, Mr. Raja. We do. So at the beginning of each academic year, I'd like to invite the full-time faculty members who were recently promoted in academic rank to come and be introduced to the board and to say a few words. And so we have with us six of those ten, actually eleven when you count Giuseppe Rotolo, who is currently serving in an academic administrative role. So I'm going to call upon Acting Vice President of Academic Affairs, Terry Oros, to introduce the deans, who will then introduce the faculty members. Terry?
Okay, good morning, everyone. Yes, it's my pleasure. I want to, Tim Hack is not able to be here today. He is actually representing the college at the graduation ceremony for a student from the Juvenile Justice Commission. So he is there representing the college on our behalf. So it's my pleasure to introduce and to acknowledge Professor Giuseppe Rotolo, who is currently serving as the Acting Chairperson of the History and Social Sciences Department. He was promoted to Assistant Professor, and we have here today Dr. Chris Drew, who was promoted this year also to Associate Professor. I... Congratulations. I don't want to put Dr. Drew on the spot. Would you like to say a few words?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for inviting me to the meeting. Beginning my eighth year here at Middlesex, it was an excellent opportunity for me to grow both my career and also engage in a brand-new program that was developed by Professor Pat Payne and Professor Michael Paquette, who is a Homeland Security Program that took root back in fall of two thousand sixteen. We started with one pilot course, and from that, we've grown the program over the past eight years to now each semester, we're running three full sections just in the intro to Homeland Security foundational course itself. As far as future growth for the program, looking to potentially have two other branches that we can go off the Homeland degree, which would be in the Protective Services and also the Intelligence Services careers in that arena as well. So thank you very much. I really appreciate all the collegiality here at the school, and I'm looking forward to a very bright future of the program.
Thank you, Dr. Drew. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Dean Ms. Gordon Aiden to the podium, and she's going to introduce the faculty who have been promoted from the Business Stem and Health Professions Division.
Good morning, everybody. This is my great pleasure to introduce the faculty who achieved and promoted this year, starting from this semester. And I would like to go be first to ring promoting, promoted to Assistant Professor, and some of our faculty members are able to attend some of your strategic moments. So if you are here, then now, always come to platform to share in few minutes. So the first one, I'd like to start the Engineering Department. Her name is Hallie Anderson, and again, these are the promoted to Assistant Professor. Sally Akala, Dental Hygiene, and May Kala, Grish Natural Sciences. And would you like to come?
Good morning. I want to express my gratitude to the Board of Trustees, Dr. McCormick, Dean Aiden, Dr. Linda Scher, Dr. Oros, and my Department Chair, Dr. Ansonoff, for approving my promotion and tenure, and extend my sincere thanks also to Doctors Levy, Hadisinski, and Rowley, who for their service on my committee. My passion for teaching stems from a desire to be of service. I think it's only fitting that I found a professional home here at Middlesex, where our mission is centered on providing access to a quality, affordable education for a diverse population. As a student of philosophy myself, I'm motivated every day by the words of Sami Dayan and Saraswati, who stated, "The gift of knowledge is considered to be the greatest. Whether you directly offer knowledge to another person by teaching a language, a discipline of science, or a skill, or indirectly provide a situation for such transference of knowledge to take place, it is a contribution." In this profession, not every day on the job is a success or straightforward. But as I've taught here for many years, I'm fortunate to have seen the rewards of persistence. I'm so grateful for the conversations I have with my prior students. Often after many semesters, I have taught them, have advanced to the next level in their academic or professional careers, or pursued a path they have not previously considered, in parts stemming from my teaching. It reminds me constantly why what we do here matters, and our duty as educators to keep striving ourselves to become even more perfect at our track. Thank you again for your vote of confidence in me as a colleague, and for the opportunity to continue to serve and contribute to a special community here in Middlesex.
Congratulations, Andrew. And Shannon Laura, she's from Business and Computer Science. She will be joining us today. And Sharon Rosalina, she was supposed to come, but I think she couldn't make it. From, and Stephanie, and from the Natural Sciences, she's here, and would you like to come?
Thank you so much for having me and inviting me to be here today. I am so thrilled with where I have brought my career and so happy to be here at the college. My start here was actually as a student. I was a student in dental hygiene, and it was really the faculty that helped encourage me to get to this point. And I'd like to thank especially Professor Lynn Tobin. She is the one that actually brought me over to our chair at the time, Dr. Parag Malay, and introduced us, and that is how I started as an adjunct in natural sciences. And for five years, I worked as an adjunct, mostly on Saturdays, and now there was a opportunity to have a full-time position. And my dear friend, colleague, mentor, Professor Will Kleinough, helped me with giving me the confidence to apply for that position, and I'm so thrilled that I was given that opportunity. And he really believed in me, and I'm going to miss him. He just retired, so I know I will definitely miss him. But also, my chair now, Dr. Mike Ansonoff, has been a great support for me and for the entire Department of Natural Sciences. So I'd also like to thank him. And my committee was made up of Will, Professor Will Kleinough, Dr. Parag Malay, and Professor Lynn Tobin, who I really credit all of them for me getting to this point. It's not where I thought I was going to be, but I'm so thrilled. And I've really grown to love this position at the college, and I look forward to many more years to come. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. And now I would like to introduce the faculty who are promoted to Associate Professor. Dr. Molly Craig Ray from Natural Sciences. Unfortunately, he's teaching, but he's not able to join us. And Joseph Nessie, be here?
Yes.
Yes. Would you like to come on the panel?
Good morning, Dr. McCormick and Board of Trustees. Thank you for inviting me. I want to share a couple of things with you about my experiences here at Middlesex. So I'm starting my eighteenth year here at the college. I became, I started as a adjunct. I was in public accounting for a prior career for myself. And what has really been for me, the experience of a lifetime, is to see the success and growth of our students. And I'll start with a little example of what happened yesterday. We've started the semester and gone through two chapters of work, and we had our first quiz yesterday. And at the end of my class, a student came up to me and stood in front of me with her cellphone. She was reading ear to ear to show me she'd gotten a ninety-eight point four-four on her first quiz. So she was so ecstatic. And for me, the fact that I have that ability to make an impact, to share my knowledge with them, to bring these students along. So I'm a CPA. I was in public accounting, as I mentioned, for many years. One of the programs I'm taking a very personal interest in is developing our students for careers in accounting and transferring to the Rutgers Business School. And to see students like Bhavisha here, who I've worked with in the classes, to see her success, for me, is what it's all about. I just, I have another example that I talked about with the student who started at a four-year project. It wasn't for him. Took some years off to find what he wanted to do, came back here, took my accounting one and two classes, transferred to Rutgers Business School, graduated, took the CPA exam. We've stayed in contact. He invited me to his wedding. We've now got together. He's got three children. So the success of our students, what they get from all of us here, putting in our efforts to help them find their career path and then actually achieve against it, for me, has been the reward of a lifetime. So I look forward to many more years of continuing to work with our students, being part of the collegiality, fellow faculty, and work together to just make this as great an institution as I can. Thank you.
This is, I'd like to invite more young to, from natural sciences.
Dr. McCormick, Board of Trustees, Dr. Oros, Dr. Nordan. My name is Smohit, and I have, I teach physics, and I've been here since two thousand fourteen, as a full-time since two thousand sixteen. And I've worked in the industry, I've worked in research, and one thing which was missing was the teaching, the aspect of academia, and which I got that wish fulfilled here at Middlesex. So I've been here since two thousand sixteen, and it's been very rewarding. And some of my students have been at Princeton Plasma Labs, one just took us for reference last year, and she got accepted at a full-time position at Princeton Plasma Lab. One old has been there. So people have been transferring to NGIT, to Rutgers, and to Stevens. And it's what's rewarding to me is that I'm a little part of their success. So I've helped them along the way, and that's very satisfying for me. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Looking forward to working with, working here at Middlesex for a long time. Thank you.
So say to this senior promoted faculty, and I would like to mention once again, we celebrate them. We appreciate your effort, and thank you very much for everybody's supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oros, and congratulations to all the professors. Okay, we can go to the committee report. Finance, I call upon Committee Chair, Trustee Taffet, to present the finance report.
Thank you. Good morning. Yep, you're good. See that? No matter how long you're here, still don't know how to use this. Good morning. Thank you. Good morning. I see Mr. Malteino here with us. Frank, if you will help to present the committee report consistent with the meeting we had this past week, I'd appreciate it.
Good. Will do, Gary. Thank you, and thank you, Chairman Taffet, and the morning board. On September the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the Finance Committee met at eight thirty a.m. to discuss various matters at the college concerning contracting bids, awards, payments, and other financial-related matters of the college. They are contained in ten finance resolutions before you today, and they consist of resolutions one through eight of cooperative purchases, fair and open bids, contract amendments, pay-to-play awards, police, software, and the disposition of some fully depreciated tangible business property. They also include payments to contractors, architects, and engineers that have been approved by this body, and that are occurring on campus at this time. Resolution number nine is in the amount of two thousand forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for legal fees in connection with labor matters here at the college for the month of July two thousand and twenty-four. And lastly, resolution number ten is the approval of the acceptance of funds from the state of New Jersey in two tranches, eight point five million and five million dollars related to the CIO County project and the College CIO project for construction of the Student Center facility. Chairman Taffet, that concludes the finance resolutions for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malteino. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolutions one through ten, with the exception of resolution nine A. On that resolution, I will be abstaining and ask someone else to move that resolution, please.
Mr. Raja, I would like to move resolution number nine A.
Thank you, Mr. Oros. Thank you.
Chairman Raja, this is Andy Polori. I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Polori. All, the motion is carried. All may have in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes. Abstention. Motion is carried. The Human Resources, I call upon trustee Oros to present the Human Resources Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Raja. We have a report this morning from Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. This month includes forty-one recommended items in total. A summary of the actions are listed in your packet in the areas of new hires, status changes, separations, and miscellaneous actions.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Morgan. I'd like to make a motion to approve all resolutions in the categories of hires, change of status, separations, and miscellaneous.
Thank you, Mr. Oros. Can I have second, please?
Second, trustee Anderson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention. The motion is carried. General, I would like Chair Mr. Taffet to present the general resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are three general resolutions, I believe, in the packet today. The first resolution is regarding the approval of the president's expenses, and so pursuant to section five point two of the bylaws of this body, and my role as vice chair of the board, I report to the board that I have reviewed the president's expenses and hereby recommend them. Those are expenses for the fourth fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. I found them to be in order, recommend full approval by the board. The second resolution is in regards to the annual review of the president's performance by the board. It's a board self-assessment. It's the establishment of goals for the current fiscal year for both the board and for the president himself, in accordance with the terms of the agreement of Dr. McCormick's contract. Board has reviewed Dr. McCormick's performance for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal year, and we have found that he has met or exceeded all of those goals. In addition, the board has established goals for the year ahead, goals for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year as well. So in accordance with the provisions of section four point two W of the board bylaws, the board did conduct a self-assessment at its annual board retreat regarding the board's performance for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal year in achieving its goals. And we also established board goals also for the year ahead for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. The final resolution in the packet today are those, is a resolution very proud, we're all very proud of, with regard to the naming, addresses the naming opportunities for the college's biotechnology laboratory, and it's significant for this board as well. So those would be the three resolutions. Chair Raja, if I may, I would certainly like to move the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Taffet. May I have second, please?
Second, Bob Oros.
Seconded by Mr. Oros. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Propose abstention? The motion is carried. Congratulations on the grant. Thank you. That was very nice.
I had nothing to do with it, but I did vote in favor of it.
Then Dr. McCormick and the party.
But no, seriously, congratulations to the administration. It's really nice to see outside resources, I think, and the naming. It's not an insignificant participant. It'd be a great partner for this institution. So well done by the executive team.
Mr. Hoffman, do we have a executive session?
There's no need for an executive session.
Thank you, sir. Dr. McCormick. Okay. Remind from the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners, some commissioners, Scott McCallum, or the Economic Development Head, Sandy Costa.
Sandy Castro's on Zoom.
Sandy is on the, good morning, Sandy.
Good morning. No comments from the commissioner for this morning, but thank you all for having me.
Thank you for attending our meeting. Report from Scott?
There's no report.
President's report, Dr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Raja. So August is a special time in the life of any college. We are getting ready for starting the new academic year. So thanks again to the members of our team who did that all summer long, especially facilities, IT, and others who got classrooms and spaces ready. But we also welcome back into campus at the end of August, faculty, adjunct instructors, and of course, students both new and returning. Next slide. Next slide. So while we're welcoming people back, I just want to also welcome Bhavisha Chitala to the board. So as you heard, Bhavisha was a student here at the college, graduated with honors and went on to Rutgers, and is going to make a great contribution as a member of our board. We also then welcome back, of course, the entire college community at our fall convocation. This is a photo from the end of convocation, where members of the board who were there with us in person got to be on stage with this year's recipient of the Page D Llamadu Award, the highest award that this college bestows on citizens. And so there in the middle is Middlesex County Prosecutor, Leonard Chacony. By the way, sent me a note yesterday thanking all of us for honoring her and saying how grateful she was to be honored, and her family and friends really enjoyed the ceremony. Next slide. So we also had events all week long, the week before classes began, including from the Center for the Enrichment of Learning and Teaching, a faculty-driven organization that focuses on professional development for all faculty, both full-time and adjuncts. Example, the sessions that went on that week. Next slide. We also had our welcome-back event for adjunct faculty, professional development and orientation, where new adjunct faculty members, that was conducted by both faculty and staff from the academic areas. Next slide. This was from the Friday before convocation, Friday, August twenty-third. So the student and enrollment services division puts on a whole week of activities, ending with an in-day person for all newly admitted students. And so as you see there, Performing Arts Center was packed. Nearly four hundred students attended, some with their family and friends. There were sessions for parents and sessions all day long for students, ending with an outdoor get-to-know-the-college barbecue on the quad. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And then last week, we had our student engagement fair, and we had many faculty and staff who were there at tables, along with students, talking about the various services and organizations that are on campus for students to get involved. Next slide. Here's Bolt with the Five Theta Kappa Leadership Team. Next slide. This is part of the club led by Professor Drew Twunawala of the Computer Science Club. Next slide. And so we get ready to start a new year. We also get ready to start on the search for a new leader. Next slide. So those of you who've been here for a while know that Vice President Linda Scher, who was with the college for seven years, moved on in April. She was so good at her job here that when the New Jersey Council of County Colleges decided to create a position for a chief academic officer of the entire sector, she got the job. So we wish her well in her new role. We see her often, and she's a good partner with the college today. But we need somebody else to replace her. And so I want to start by thanking Dr. Terry Oros for stepping into that role temporarily. Terry's been at the college for three decades. Terry served in probably every aspect of student enrollment services and academic affairs, and she was the right person to do it. We're very grateful for your leadership. But we also want to get that moved on. I know Terry wants us to get moved on. And so we started the search process back last spring. Dr. Scher gave us the luxury of several months' notice, and so we posted for the position in February. We had a search committee, ten people at the time, led by Professor Pat Payne and Dr. Michelle Roman, the Chair of our Dental Hygiene Department. And the first round of applicants was only about thirty and wasn't robust enough, and the committee decided not to invite anyone from that pool for an interview. And so we regrouped. We decided to engage the services of a national professional search firm, the Poly Group, who's focused only on community colleges and mainly on leadership positions, and they've done their job. We now have seventy applications in the pool that meet the minimum, many of which look very strong, very diverse group in many ways. And so the committees, I guess, I know is going to re-engage in that process beginning this Friday, to look at those seventy applications and decide which of those seventy to bring in for a first one interview. Some of you are here. Thanks to those of you on the committee. But the end of that process will be that the committee will recommend to me four to six candidates to look at more intently, and I will bring at least two to four of those candidates to campus for interviews with the executive team and tour and open forums for anyone in the college community to come and hear from them, ask questions, and then give your input. So there'll be input from all of you, input from my team, input from some of my members of the board, and we will then decide where to go in terms of making an offer to someone who might serve as our next VP for Academic Affairs. So thanks again to those who were part of the search, but you'll all be part of the search, hopefully toward the end of this fall semester. Next slide. And the end result, of course, is commencement. There's a photo from this last commencement. If you were there, you know what a great day it was and how the students who come across that stage expressed such joy at the opportunity we gave them to get to where they want to be in their academic journey. Next slide. So looking back, this is our sixtieth anniversary as an institution, and we have a great archives maintained by our library faculty and staff, and we also have a lot of other documents that we are pouring through. And so over the course of this year, you'll see on our social media, on the college website, bits of that history, artifacts, documents, photos, stories. And I also will bring some of those to the board meetings beginning next month. But I want to show today a short video that the marketing communications team has developed that sort of kicks off the academic year with a focus looking back on our last sixty years. And so can you show that video, please, Kevin? Thank you, Kevin. So if you get a chance, take a look at what's on social media in the next few months. So if you get a chance, take a look at what's on social media in the next few months. I'll be indicating some of those things here at the board meeting, but also share your own stories. Uh, a lot of you have been with the college a long time and know others who have. We're reaching out to former employees, to alumni, to share their stories and to tell the story of Middlesex County College from nineteen sixty four until today. And that was the last slide. Kevin? Okay, thank you, Mr. Raja.
Thank you, Dr. McCormick. That's a good brief. Now I call upon Professor Payne, um President of AFT Local nineteen forty. Ms. Payne, uh you have five minutes to address the board.
Good morning. Oh, my, this is not, yeah. Thank you. I hope everyone enjoyed it. It's your summer, uh and I have just a few things to report on this morning. Um, first of all, happy belated Constitution Day. Um, yesterday I presented on the presidential election in the Electoral College. Uh, I partnered with Charlotte Quigley from Student Services and urged our students to register and vote. Uh, I want to do give a shout out to Charlotte, to Kevin Delina and his team. Uh, my department chair, Giuseppe Rotulo, and our associate chair, Crystal Quillen and Susan Indike are administrative assistant for all their support on this effort. Um, maybe you can all attend uh next time. I'll send an invite. The vice presidential search, I was going to speak to it, Mark. Thank you for doing that this morning. Um, I just want to publicly thank the committee members, uh both faculty and administrators who are working diligently to move this process along. It's a tremendous amount of work. Um, and I want to thank each member of the committee for volunteering and committing their time. The position of Vice President of Academic Affairs is the most important academic administrative position on campus. Whose chief responsibility is to be the lead advocate for academics, to advocate for the financial investment in academics. To support academic endeavors on behalf of the faculty and our students. After all, that's why we're all here, to champion our students. And with seventy percent of our students focused on transferring to four year institutions, academics should be and needs to be our number one priority. Interim Vice President of Academic Affairs, Terry Oros and I have been working together since April, and we are fine tuning processes, attempting to streamline workflow. And our discussions have been productive and resolution based. Our next project is to focus on ATAC, that is the Academic Technology Advisory Committee. And we are going to co-facilitate uh the Steering Committee to support collaborative discussions with faculty and administrators. By taking an initial look at AI and its impact on academic integrity. A meeting of that committee, the Steering Committee, will be scheduled soon. This committee will also work with academic standards and educational resources, task forces from the College Assembly. So a broad based discussion of stakeholders will engage in this work. These are just two or three examples of how administrators and faculty are working together. And there are many others I could share. But the following demonstrates examples of the opposite. It is seventeen months since we settled the faculty contract. And we still do not have a finalized version of the faculty of the of the faculty union contract for the board and the union to sign. Management is now yelling at me about spacing issues in the document. I didn't think there was anything left for them to argue about at this point. Um, but just to note, I am done now. Faculty came back to school in August, faced with IT and technology issues in their offices and classrooms. To avoid recurring problems from getting worse, I emailed John Italiano and asked for a meeting. Jeff Heron responded to my email and ignored my request to meet. Interestingly, Mark McCormick had mentioned to me the week before that we should not email about issues, but have more conversation. So following Mark's advice, I asked for a meeting. Perhaps he forgot to mention that same suggestion to Jeff. There remain areas where the collaborative effort to work together that was agreed to by us and you. Um, after the contract was settled, a mutual a mutual commitment is not necessarily wholly embraced, but really only by a few administrators. And I get it, not everyone is open to change, but I do believe by some, by a few, there's an intentional disregard. With attempts to upset the progress the rest of us are making. I assure you, I am not deterred, and I will continue to work in all facets of the college, not just labor relations, as I have for the last seventeen months. To further foster the importance of faculty and administrators working side by side collaboratively. Contention does not serve our institution, our faculty or our students. We are a year out from the next round of contract negotiations. And frankly, I thought by now on that, we'd be in a better place. Change is hard in a work environment, and it takes more than words to create and sustain change. It takes action along with the change of behavior and approach. It sounds nice to say you'd like to collaborate. It's something altogether different to actually do it. The faculty are doing it. You heard from some today. It's something that they will continue to demonstrate, and we do that through our actions. The divisiveness need not be the norm, and working together can be the new normal on our campus. Faculty, we are setting the example, and we'll continue to do that. Thanks for listening. See you next time.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. And the old business. And the new business. Comments from the audience, uh Ms. Gharish, uh Garmesh, has anyone registered to address the board?
Uh Chair Raja, we have four individuals registered.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Uh, it is now the time for the public comments section, seven point four of board bylaw governed public. Participation at the board meeting pursuant to the provisions of bylaw. The following protocol will be observed. Only those individuals who registered at least twenty four hours in in advance of the meeting. With the Assistant Secretary of the Board will be called upon to address the board. The college staff will announce your name in order in which you register. If you are part participating on Zoom, please be sure uh your name as it appears on Zoom. Um, matches in the name you used to register. Um, profess your comments by announcing your name, municipality of residence and uh group affiliation. You will have three minutes to speak. Please direct all the comments to me. Please. A a college staff member will announce when thirty seconds of your time is remaining. And again, when your three minutes are up. Uh, IT staff, call the names, please.
Chair Raja, the first registered speaker for today is joining us by way of Zoom, Chuck Schnikoff. Your three minutes begins now.
Hello and good morning, everyone. My name is Chuck Schnekloff, and I'm the track coach here at Middlesex College. Like most of the college community, including many members of the press, I was shocked to read the Human Resource Committee's report. Finding Rocco Constantino guilty of official misconduct, but deciding to not take any action against him. I was even more shocked to hear about the subsequent decision to cut the track team. When I return to the country next week, I look forward to further conversations about this. Meanwhile, I'm here today to tell a story. It's a story that is now circulating in both the athletic department and the school's student body. It's a story that epitomizes the common experience of both students and adults alike here on campus. A few weeks ago, twenty Middlesex College students walked into the PE building. Despite their busy class and busy work schedules, they all admirably carved out time in their day to visit the fitness center for a workout. After all, many of our students value health and fitness, like the track team, and most know that their tuition covers such an on campus service. Unfortunately, these students stood in the hallway, waiting patiently for the student worker to arrive and finally unlock the doors and turn on the lights. However, that student worker never came. Why? Because he had notified his boss, Rocco Constantino, several weeks prior that his job no longer aligned with his schedule, forcing him to thus resign from it. Sadly, but to no surprise, Mr. Constantino failed to act. He failed to promptly hire a replacement. He failed to communicate this with the department colleagues. He failed to hang a simple sign on the door telling students it wasn't going to be open that day. And by failing to do these basic job responsibilities, he once again failed our students. As luck would have it, President McCormick was there that day. He bared witness to the hallway of frustrated students, their afternoons now wasted, failed once again by the Middlesex College Athletic Director. And when President McCormick and two other school officials looked for answers. They got the true Middlesex athletics experience. Rocco didn't come to work that day to address their questions and concerns. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to speaking with you all very soon about the future of the track team and the athletics department here at Middlesex College.
Thank you.
Next registered speaker is Jesse Jimenez.
Dear Board of Trustees, my name is Jesse Jimenez, and I am now a sophomore here at Middlesex. I was one of many students who attended the June meeting to request a criminal investigation into Rocco Constantino. In twenty, oh, in twenty twenty three, I broke three school records and earned three all American medals. I anchored the Middlesex four by four relay to the national title last May. I was excited for the twenty twenty four season. I was excited to represent the school again, and I was excited to earn a scholarship to a four year school. However, Middlesex canceled the season because Mr. Constantino didn't complete the necessary paperwork. Just recently, I learned that this that this investigation has cleared Rocco of any wrongdoing and that Rocco has now cut the track team. My teammates and I are in disbelief and devastated to hear the news. Also, I was surprised no one interviewed me for this investigation. I I have two questions now for the board. First, how was Rocco cleared of any wrongdoing if he didn't email our track coach back for a hundred and fifteen days to help him get practice permits and the season started? Second, if the reason for cutting the track team was unavailability, unavailability of Thomas Edison Park, why weren't the soccer teams also cut? They also practice and compete here as well. We didn't have this park available in twenty twenty three, and we had thirteen All Americans. Me and my teammates look forward to hearing the answer to these questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next.
Chair Raja, the next speaker is Elam Akolat. If I mispronounced that, I apologize. They are not on the Zoom, so. The final speaker for today will be Charlie Cardaville. He is on the Zoom. Charlie, your three minutes begins now.
Good morning, board members. Can you hear me okay? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. Uh, wanted to speak about uh some of the same issues other speakers have brought up. I'll draw your attention to an article in Quovatus, uh great source of pride for the college is the student newspaper. And um, yeah, there was an article by Nolan McFadden about the track team. And yeah, I was surprised to hear uh the County College Vice President saying that the closure of Thomas Edison Park was. Uh, you know, responsible, at least in part, for the team being shut down. Uh, can anyone tell me when the decision was made to pause the track team?
You can email it to administration and they will respond to you via email. Thank you.
Okay, I think these are important facts for the board to know. Um, I did speak to the administration uh yesterday. Kimberly Burnett sent me a statement um that differs significantly from what was given to the Quovatus newspaper. Um, it says in part, quote, after the college was made aware earlier this year of potential violations of the bylaws. Your college athletic association within the track and field program, an investigation was warranted. And as a result, we immediately paused competition to conduct an investigation. Can anyone tell me the status of that investigation, the NJCAA? Potential violation of bylaws investigation? Can anyone give me a status on that?
Could you please email to the administration? They will respond to you.
I I will, I I would hope that the board would have these answers too, and that you would want them. Uh, I also, uh, you know, have heard about an investigation into the athletic director and some disturbing allegations there. I understand these were brought up at the June meeting. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the June meeting. Can you tell me, is uh there a recording of your June meeting? Do you record your board meetings?
Thirty seconds remain.
We do not.
Okay, is there a reason you don't?
There's no reason. It's not, it it it's not a practice.
Okay, well, I'd suggest you change the practice. I think, you know, it it one good thing you're doing is allowing people to remotely join, including the board members. So since you are using the Zoom platform, it's as simple as hitting the record button. I think that uh, you know, the the public, the the college staff, students all deserve a proper rec.
Dr. McCormick, would you like to offer any final remark?
Thanks, Mr. Raja, I would. So first and foremost, I want to thank the faculty members of time come this morning to be introduced to the board. Thank you for speaking so hard about why you enjoy teaching and being with students. Uh, we appreciate what you do, and we're glad that you're here with us. And number two, Mr. Jimenez, uh, we thank you for your time for bringing to our attention your concerns of the student athlete. We take those seriously. I can assure you that there was an investigation into the claims made about the athletics program. And that uh investigation report were reviewed by the colleges boards, human resource committee chaired by Mr. Oros. Who then presented his findings from the committee to the board um executive committee this summer, which was ratified this morning at this meeting. So we did look into it and we did take your concern seriously. But I want to end by saying that um, I want to remind us all that Middlesex College is an incredibly complex enterprise, right? We are people oriented. It's mainly personnel doing things, but we also have facilities, IT, risks, how to how to operate through processes like HR and finance. And so with five hundred full time employees, another four hundred, eight hundred part time, including adjuncts in any given time during the year, there's a lot to keep track of, a lot to manage. I think we do it well. I have pride in our um our performance here, both in the faculty and the classroom and in administration and in operations. But inevitably, with an enterprise as large, things are not going to work sometimes, and we'll be frustrated. And so I'll look at our campus here in Edison. It's nearly two hundred acres in size. There are thirty six buildings of various ages, different systems, and even with the best preventive maintenance, I tip my hat to Wayne Deek, Executive Director of Facilities Management, his team. I think we maintain our campus very well. But if you're a homeowner like me, even with the best preventive maintenance contracts every year to check on your heater and your air conditioner, things break, right? And when they do, what do you do? If you don't have the expertise yourself to diagnose the problem, you bring in the expert, right? You may get two or three experts to give you different quotes, different ideas of what what to do to resolve the issue. Then you choose a path forward, you find the resources to make it happen, and you execute. It can take time. It can be frustrating. It's the same here with everything we do, with facilities, with IT, with processes. Things aren't always going to work the way we want. I would hope that you, all of us, find in ourselves, when that happens, to report it to the right person so they're aware of the issue. But more importantly, find it in ourselves to then respond to our colleagues with patience, kindness and grace. Have a great semester.
Thank you, Dr. McCormick. That was very good. As we have no further business to conduct this morning, the board is adjourned until the next regular meeting on October 16, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. in the location to be determined and advertised in advance. It will be advertised in advance and zoomed with the link to be posted on the college website. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a great day.